Tonight, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, first item is a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a crowded agenda tonight, so hopefully we'll be able to hurry right along. But before we get started, I noticed we've got high school students Allison and Stephanie are here tonight that are taking notes on what we're doing, so everybody be careful, they're cute, watch your language, and if they have questions, we'll stop the proceeding to answer them.
Staff can answer.
First item is the approval of the minutes of the both. We've got a workshop April 9th and April 24th. I can do them together unless you all want to separate them.
Move the approval of both minutes. Second?
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Pass unanimously. Next item is not on consent. It's Egret Marsh Stormwater Treatment Facility. Request for a major site plan and administrative permit use approval for the Egret Marsh Stormwater Treatment Facility, Indian River County owner. This is quasi-judicial, so if whoever's going to speak would stand and be sworn, we would appreciate it. Is this, get this in, make sure this is said slowly. They, they...
I didn't hear him say it.
Speak up.
It sounded like what it is to me. Okay. Take it away, Mr. McCoy.
Yes, this is a major site plan and administrative permit use application for the Egret Marsh Stormwater Permit, and it is a limited utility use. And limited utility uses are usually uses such as pump stations or electrical substations, things like that. In this case, it's a little bit unique. It's a, it's a stormwater facility, and it's located at the southeast corner of 74th Avenue and 4th Street. And there's a little cut out there that is the Indian River Farms Water Control District Office. The aerial shows the site a little bit better. Again, the Indian River Farms Water Control District site is in the northwest corner of the subject site. The aerial shows you all the natural features on the site, and the applicant's work trying to preserve and use a lot of the natural features, as many of the natural features as possible. And I don't have a real in-depth presentation, I just have several slides for you. The next slide is actually the layout, and let me talk a little bit about the layout, how it works, and really what it is. The, there are several Indian River Farms Water Control District canals off of the slide, actually, in the northwest corner. They'll pump water from those canals into a pipe that carries it into the headworks of the plant. As the pipe comes across the Indian River Farm site, it's actually gonna clip part of the Indian River Farm site, so the county will need to obtain an easement for where that pipe falls on the Indian River Farm site prior to site plan release. Once the water gets to the headworks, it's going to sheet flow across this algal...
Scrubber system.
Algal scrubber. It's a membrane that grows the algae. So it's a, it's this membrane, she flows across the membrane, grows the algae, cleans the water. The algae will be harvested in the summertime on a weekly basis, and it will be composted at the south end in this area. And the black area is a perimeter road that'll get you down to the composted algae, get you over to the parking lot, into the headworks of the plant, and also provides access out to 4th Street. Once the water flows across that membrane, it's collected at the far end of the membrane, goes into a pipe, comes out, and goes into this initial polishing pond. It then moves over to the secondary intermediate polishing pond, and then the final polishing pond. At that point, the water is put in a pipe, and it comes out to this area, which is another treatment area, and also a habitat recreation for this area, and then finally outfalls back into the canal system down at this point. And that's essentially the system. With that, I would like to get to staff's recommendations. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant administrative permit use approval, a major site plan approval, with the conditions as recommended by staff. We do have Cliff Southard here with Public Works Department, who has been part of this project and can answer any technical questions.
Cliff, thank you for coming down tonight. That would be good. Anybody got any questions of staff, one way or the other? Is there a mud bogging track in the works here or not?
There is not.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Comments from the public? If not, I need a motion.
Move. Second?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Mighty quiet crowd tonight.
Good to see you, Cliff.
You staying busy, I hope? Good. Okay. Next item is a public discussion on review of a draft of the Indian River County Comprehensive Plan Solid Waste Subelement Evaluation and Appraisal Report. Sasan.
Here's our favorite guy.
Good evening. Yeah, you could see that the last, the last time they had me in the sewer system, now I'm in the solid waste. I'm improving.
Explain to our young high, the high school students here that we're gonna be talking trash now.
Yes.
We'll be talking some garbage.
Yeah, and as you know, we are evaluating our comprehensive plan, and tonight we're gonna bring two of the elements of the comprehensive plan for your review. One of them is a solid waste subelement, and the other one is economic development element that Bill Shu is gonna do that for. Also, we have Himanshu, who is the director of the Solid Waste Disposal District, that he's here also, he could help us with these elements. Again, this is one of the 15 elements that we discussed before, and we look at them. All of these elements, they have these, these six components. For solid waste, Utility Advisory Committee, they are the group that are actually reviewing these elements, and they've been involved with it since 2006. Their review is ongoing. Also, Solid Waste Disposal District staff gonna review and give us a comment on this one. Overall, our review of the comprehensive plan indicate that we are doing real good as far as the solid waste is concerned. They increased the size of the area, they increased the capacity, and basically they are doing real good as far as processing all of the solid waste. Also, their cost increased, but in the meanwhile, their revenue increased that they could cover the cost, and there's no problem there either. For the recycling, they increased the amount that recycle. However, the percentage of the waste being recycled actually reduced between 95 and 2006. And one of the state requirements is that we need to actually recycle about 30% of the solid waste stream, and right now we are about 23%. Overall, as I mentioned, the solid waste, they are really doing good. The only thing that we are not doing as good is for recycling. And Solid Waste Disposal District, they are recommending several things, one of them is education. Basically, we need to get more people to recycle. Again, we know many people that are still, they are not really recycling, and since it's free of charge to everybody, we really need to inform the people and public that, you know, we get more recycling. The other thing is that the Solid Waste Disposal District, they're trying to increase the number of the items being recycled. Currently, they only could recycle seven items, and they wanna increase that one. Also, they wanna increase the way that they collect and process the recycling. Right now, they collect and separate everything on site, and they wanna make the difference the way that they collect everything together and take to recycling center to be separated. And they are really believing by doing all of these things, they could increase the percentage of the waste that being recycled. Solid Waste Disposal, the solid waste subelement has four objectives, three of them achieved, and one of them is not due till 2010. As far as the policies, as you see in the report, we are recommending to maintain many of them. We are recommending to revise some of them, and also to add some new policies. Again, as I mentioned, three of the objectives are met. The only one that we didn't meet is objective four, and that regarding the recycling percentage. Of course, it's not due till 2010, but we really don't think that by 2010, maybe we could meet this one. But however, with all of the things that we are planning to do, we are hoping that in future, actually not very far future, we could actually meet the 30% and exceed the 30%. Again, like any other thing with this EAR, we, the big picture thing is for solid waste is to have an efficient and safe system of solid waste management, and we are, we need to look at our objective, our goals, and see if we have the thing to make it to provide us a safe and efficient system, and see if we have sufficient policies to do that, and also if there's anything that we could do better. Again, based on our evaluation, the only thing that we really need to do better is the recycling part of it. With that, again, I'm open for any question.
Anybody have any questions? Sasan. With the landfill where it is today, we've got, I think it's 270 or 280 acres total, is that?
Right now, the total, they have 500, let me go back to that, they have 529 acres, I believe.
Okay, they was, they added, they doubled it basically by buying to the north of it, with the Hogan's property, et cetera?
Yes, exactly.
Are we planning to expand north to Oslo Road or?
No, actually, they are not. Basically, they might use their property north, south of Oslo Road for some other, like maybe industrial type or recycling facilities, but actually, they are not gonna use it for actual place that they're gonna bury the waste.
Okay. I mean, the reason I ask was more mundane. Eventually, we will have an intersection at Oslo and 95, and it will become a corridor coming into the county, and the landfill is in, it's where it is for need from the past, but if, rather than building out to Oslo, I just, and greeting, greeting guests.
No, they are not gonna expand the actual cells to the Oslo, no.
What's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. What's gonna happen to the Gifford Waste Water Treatment Plant? Are you guys gonna close that down altogether? Is that where it's going? I'm seeing notes in here about the subject of St. Woods, and how you changed a lot of that.
Basically, right now, all of the septicage, and also all the grates and everything from all of the wastewater system, they were collected in the different wastewater treatment plant. They would dry that, and then they would take it to the landfill. Eventually, they are getting the permit to move everything to the landfill, and I really don't know what is the plan for the Gifford. Do you know?
They're gonna now haul it to the landfill south at Oslo, right?
Yes.
So what happens to?
Basically, they are getting, they are getting the permit to build a dewatering plant at the landfill, that everything could go to a landfill, be dewatered, and disposed of there.
What's your name and?
Good evening, Himanshu Matha, Managing Director of the Solid Waste Disposal District. Regarding the dewatering facility, the wastewater treatment plant is remaining in place in Gifford, but there's a current dewatering facility of the processes there. That facility is under design and permitting to be relocated to the landfill site. We're looking at construction starting later this year, going into 2009, and...
Well, you're dumping up there now, right?
Currently, the...
What happens to that site where you're now dumping? Is there gonna be some mitigation to neutralize that, or is it, what's it gonna be, turned into a park or something?
At the Gifford site?
Yeah, the Gifford site.
They would decommission the, you know, the...
When they decommission, at my point, is what becomes of the?
Expansion? Or they're gonna mix it up?
It could just be an area for expansion at the wastewater plant. I mean, you know, all the materials would come to the landfill.
Okay. As a note, I'll tell you that Palm Beach had the same trouble over the last few years of falling between, below the 30% recyclable, and they decided to make it easier on the customer, which is the way to do it. They now don't make you separate the green glass, and et cetera, et cetera. Just last week, they decided to put everything in, and they separated, and it increased by like 50%, 40 or 50%, so you might wanna call Palm Beach and see what they did.
Exactly, and that is what they're planning to do.
We're actually looking at a similar process.
As you recommended here.
Right. What's, what's happening is that the limitation right now is that when the recycling driver comes in front of your house, he's doing the sorting in front of your house.
Right.
So there's, he has seven compartments, and he's separating everything there. What we're looking to do is eliminate that process. Basically, go to what they call a dual stream or a single stream process, where it may not be any difference to you in terms of how you're putting it in the containers right now. If we stick with the two recycle bins, we're looking at a process where we would expand it to include other plastics, one through seven, a lot of your paper, your magazine products, your cereal boxes, and even possibly cardboard. So, so we're under the process of right now, we're looking at making changes to that.
Well, I'm sorry, but that, you just touched on what I was gonna ask about, and that was simply that, there are several times it happens if you put, people throw the wrong plastic in or something, and, you know, your driver leaves it in there, and it comes back into the house, and that does nothing for helping people want to read, recycling.
Exactly.
And I don't think people have ever understood why you can recycle parts of the newspaper with glossy sheets and not magazines, and then cardboard, and so the more, the more products you take and we're able to do something with, I believe you can, you can double the number. I think you could catch up easily, as long as you can do what you're talking about.
We can, and that's our plan to do that.
Is your plan to one week, glass and metal, and the next week, newspaper, or both at the same time?
Both at the same time. The process would be is instead of having seven compartments, you would maybe just have two. That would give him a lot more room in the truck. What was happening is with the plastics, we didn't have one through seven, because in one compartment, that plastic would fill up. He'd have to stop his route, go to the landfill, and then get back on route. So by eliminating these compartments, they'll be able to have a lot more room to take, take on those additional plastics.
I don't think separating paper and plasti, you know, paper and something is a problem. I think it's the, trying to, the plastics.
I know some areas where they do, one week is paper, and the next week is everything else. You know, paper, cardboard, and white paper.
The way the fuel prices...
Regular garbage truck, then.
Right. The way the fuel prices are and whatnot, I think, you know, right now, if we can stay with the program, or whether it's once a week pickup and recycling, I think, you know, it'd be more efficient on the haulers' part as well.
What's the penalty if you fall below 30%?
It's a goal. It's...
We change the EAR and...
Well, even with the, even with the DEP, I mean, there's, you know, an encouragement and a statewide goal to reach 30%. The numbers, again, in your EAR, you're comparing 1995 to 2005 level, so you're looking at DEP numbers from 2004 to 23%. We've actually gone up to 30% the following year, and up to about 28% last year. So, so the more recent numbers are better. But again, in your EAR, it only compares those 10 years.
Excuse me, Dr. Baker.
I was wondering about plastic bags. Did you talk about them? I couldn't see it in here.
No. Currently, a lot of your supermarkets and whatnot are collecting the plastic bags, and...
But you're only getting less than 1% by understanding this bag. And how long do they last in the landfill?
Pretty long time.
A million years?
That's a pure hydrocarbon.
That's quite a long time.
Our landfill's been there for about 30 years, and I'm sure, you know, there's some plastic there.
So some, I, there was a thing in the paper about Sarasota banning them, actually, in Sarasota County, and there was a controversy about, in the local press journal, about, well, I guess they were giving our representative Mayfield credit for wanting to have a state law to cover this. But a lot of other places are putting incentives at the grocery store, that if you bring your own bag, you don't pay for the plastic bag, or, I'm sure that people are paying for it most of the time, but they, if we could put an incentive where people could bring their own bags, I mean, that's a huge amount of oil right there that doesn't get recycled in your system.
But Publics, who was having, who put out plastic, I mean, not plastic, but cloth bags? One of the supermarkets had them out.
Publics has a...
Green bags or something, they call them?
If you could make it worthwhile, and actually, if it could be shared, you know, with Publics, and possibly even shared with the county, to help lessen the cost of that, I think it would be worthwhile. So I'd like to see that in here, if we could somehow get a policy. I'm not sure we really need to wait for the state to tell us what to do, but we could...
You gotta talk to them anyway. Publics is a good green company.
And I'm not sure what Sarasota County is doing, if they're gonna, you know, bend and not have, disavow their ruling, or if they're going to continue it.
I think it's education, you know, educating the public to bring, you know, other type of bags.
But it's really difficult to educate the public. I mean, maybe you can educate the school kids. I'm sure there's hope there, but...
Now, you girls heard that, you are not that hard to educate, are you?
But in the adult, I mean, people just aren't used to doing this, and if they're only getting back 1%, I mean, people say them, there's a place out there, bins out there, easy to do, and it's, they compact really quite nicely, but most people don't do it, apparently. How do you decide these objectives too, that you have in here? Do you make the objectives, or how does?
Actually, let me address that. And this is a good discussion, I like it, and it gives me an opportunity to illustrate something like, Himanshu's here talking about operations and the details, and he knows day to day how everything's going. We're a little more further removed. What we're doing is, we're looking big picture, what's the county's overall policy? What should it be towards solid waste? And Dr. Baker, you made a good point. It's good to have a policy that maybe keeps less of the plastic out of the landfill, and that's something we can put in there. But basically, it's, it's really us, planning staff, working with Solid Waste District and utilities to come up with the objectives. And, and that's always a challenge, 'cause you want something that's measurable, you want something that's meaningful. You've got to know really where you're going if you ever expect to get there, and that's what an objective is. So Himanshu and the Solid Waste District really aren't the ones that came up with the objectives, but they worked with us closely to do it.
They have to deal with it.
Also, state law...
I saw him roll his eyes at you twice.
State law, which is 9J5, Florida Administrative Code, have the minimum criteria. There are some objectives that they tell us that we have to have these objectives. The other one we could add as the local government.
So ours are, these objectives that you said we met are the minimum. Is that right?
We go beyond the minimum everywhere. What, what Sasan is saying, there's Florida statutes 163, and then there's Florida Administrative Code Rule 9J5, and each of them, each of those rules says that every local government has to have objectives that address this, or this, or this. In the solid waste element, we go beyond, I think, what, what the state...
But I saw the objectives that you presented were just one, two, and three, and, you know, that doesn't tell me if it's the minimum, if you, where you, you said you met objective one.
Yeah, we, we are, we're giving bare bones presentations.
It's all in your backup, that we, the written document, and we've got a copy of our current plan. But actually, and that's, that's really where we'd like your input, do the objectives that we have, are those the ends we really should be trying to attain? You know, we know we wanna always have adequate capacity at the landfill to accommodate the solid waste.
I think it would be good to put it in, in regards to people too, if it, per capita, for instance, the amount of savings, or how the objectives are per capita person. Are we improving per person, or are we, I mean, we're getting more and more people in our county, yet our recycling is going down. I mean, I, that's hard for me to understand what's happening there, but if we knew, if, am I, am I throwing away, am I recycling better, or am I recycling less? You know, I mean, I can't find that in here.
They have a per capita element in here.
And I think Himanshu will tell you, the numbers, the percentage of recycling is really a lot better than it looks, because it's just the state doesn't count certain recycling that we do, correct, Himanshu?
Lot of the yard trash and construction and demolition and some of those materials, you know, especially the yard trash, that goes to a Orlando waste energy facility for processing and whatnot, so that they consider that as a fuel source, so they don't count that as a recycling. A lot of our tires and whatnot as well, so...
I would encourage you, as like Dr. Baker said, the, the long chain carbons that are in the plastics are like forever, I mean, literally in the thousands of years to decompose, and that's gonna do it by UV. It's not gonna do it underneath, and where it's buried. Some way, we ought to try to increase that.
Then make sure you don't complain about having a wet newspaper in the morning, if it's delivered to your house.
I don't get the newspaper in the morning. I don't read that rug.
Okay, any other questions or?
On the recycling bins, is there a way of distributing them better to the people? I know a lot of my neighbors don't even have them, so they don't recycle. They have a hard time getting the bins.
Yeah, currently, there's three locations. One is at the landfill, one is the Utility Operations Center, and then up in Sebastian at Keeping Indian River Beautiful. We're getting out there more. Solid Waste and Keeping Indian River Beautiful are going to a lot of public events. We passed over about 600 bins last month. So we're getting out in the community. People are coming in and getting them. We need, we need to do better. We could do better.
I think you need to do better on...
Hopefully, they'll take their own recycle bin back as plastic. I had them given back to me three times.
What, what also is going on, we're looking at certain subdivisions. Recently, Habitat for Humanities came and approached us. They have Grace Grove subdivision, and, you know, it's our understanding that, again, that residents are recycling, but they approached us and said, hey, you know, only about three or four homes are recycling in their subdivision. We went there one evening, about 160 bins, delivered them, passed them around to all the homes, and, and that's what we're trying to do, but...
You may wanna try to do that in Indian River shores.
Okay.
I see a lot of non-recycling going on there, 'cause they don't, people don't have the bins.
Right, right.
And maybe at the town center or something, make them available.
That'd be a good target program for you.
Yeah, we're trying to get out, again, to a lot of the public events. We had them at Earth Day, a lot of the, up in Sebastian, Pelican Island Wildlife Festival. When we had the electronic recycling event in January at the mall, we were passing out recycling bins as people were dropping off their electronics. So, again, we're trying to promote it and get out there and get the word out.
It's out.
And, and, you know, looking at the future, possibly, the haulers having the bins as well. We try to maintain control. Again, there is a cost factor in, in the bins. We want them to be used for recycling and not, not anything else. So we wanna just, you know, have some control of how they're distributed, where they're going to...
If the haulers had them with them, and they found one that was broken severely, that people are trying to reuse and just simply replace it, probably would be a good token gesture anyway.
Or if they notice a house that's not using it, drop them off.
That's correct. One of the things that we're looking at, is one of the options we may have to consider, is if we change this recycling program, and we're looking at several options, is the possibility of maybe going to a container type of system. So if we go to that type of a change, maybe sooner or down the road, what it would do is, it was, it would basically, we would be delivering a new recycling container to every home in the county. And I think that sort of a level of approach is gonna get, get the containers out there, so...
Make sure it's on wheels.
It would be on wheels, and...
It's on wheels.
Greg, you have a question?
Yeah. Sasan, I noticed that the collection stations are not as efficient, shall we say, over this last period of time, and is the intent of increasing the pickups as opposed to the collection stations, is that revenue generation? And the other thing I wanna ask you about that is, where is recycling most efficient? When there's pickup at the home, or at the collection stations?
I'm gonna refer to Himanshu.
It's, it's more efficient at the home. I mean, when we, you know, Sasan mentioned free, it's actually the resident. The resident, through their annual assessment, is paying about $2.20 a month, or $24 or so in their annual assessment for recycling pickup service. So we're, we basically, to the haulers, it's about $1.8 million a year that, that the haulers are paid to pick up recycling in the county. So with, with that type of money invested by the residents for recycling service, the most efficient place is for a resident to have a recycling container, put it in front of their house, and have it picked up. So, I mean, again, we encourage residents to get the recycling bins and use them, because we pay the haulers per CO. So when they're going down the street, we're paying them for pickup at every single house there. But again, it's a voluntary basis type of thing, where the resident, if they choose to have the bin and put the, put the recycling out there, they'll pick it up. A lot of residents do like the convenience centers, because it does afford other products that we do not have at Curb. They can recycle their cardboards there, they can bring their household hazardous waste products there. So, so the convenience centers do afford that ability, and batteries and tires and tires and tires. So the convenience centers do afford that ability, and batteries, and tires, and so on and so forth. So certain residents do like attending those stations for that. Also, businesses. Businesses are allowed to use the centers for recycling purposes. So we, so again, that's another reason where if a business did not want to subscribe for recycling pickup service, they could bring their recyclables to the convenience centers. So that's another function that they serve.
And that's one of the things, one of my concerns about the collection stations, is that I wonder what's going to happen to a battery, if you can't take it to the collection center. That is very convenient. Tires are the same thing. Put in the back of your car or your truck, and you take them there. If your collection group is not going to pick up that responsibility, I would be concerned about that. What's your feeling on it?
When you say the collection group, on the curb side?
Yeah, on curb side, picking up a battery or picking up tires, they don't do that now.
No, they don't.
But if you eliminate the collection centers, then you would provide that service also? Batteries, waste, hazardous waste, and tires, and things like that?
I guess that is something that we would have to look at. At this point, there is, as I'm aware, there's no considerations for shutting down any of the convenience centers. But if in the future, if the county moved that direction, one of the things that would happen in order for those centers to close, would be for the county to go to mandatory garbage collection. You know, we're not on mandatory garbage.
What are the chances that is happening?
It'd be, you know, a decision by the county commission.
And if you look, and if you look, that's one of the policies that's in there. Just look at the feasibility of it, because that's a very controversial issue.
My take on this was, what they're trying to do is to encourage people to increase their volume of recyclables that they can use, and I don't see them, I hadn't heard anything about closing these down. It may look, it may look that way, but I think that they, that that would be down the road. I know it's written in here, and that raises your eyebrows, but.
I think the condition there is that if the county was to go with mandatory garbage, then you would have, you know, a possibility of, like you said, they're not that efficient. We're only getting so much percentage of materials there, so, you know. But those facilities, again, could be maintained for other recyclable materials, and so they could maybe still serve some function to the county.
At these convenience centers, what is the percentage of out-of-town use people coming there and dumping material, or illegal industrial material being dumped there?
Not so much industrial, and it wouldn't be difficult to give you a percentage, but there is a possibility, because we do not have any sort of an enforcement type of methodology there, that we, potential for out-of-county residents to use those facilities is there, especially in the north and south part of the county. Also, you know, the intent of those convenience centers is for residential garbage and yard trash. Those residents that do not wish to subscribe to the collection service have the option to go to one of the five centers. But we do recognize that a lot of times, commercial businesses would go into those facilities. It's hard to police that on our level and our staff to, you know, somebody could say, well, it's my work truck, but I just came from my house, and this is my, you know, my garbage from my house. It's not for my business. We have no ability to police that.
In the big picture, you get it there instead of on the side of the road somewhere.
Yeah, I was going to say, I kind of would rather have them take it to the collection center than to dump it on 25th Street Southwest.
We would, we would too.
Yeah, but it's out-of-county people I'm talking about.
Somebody's mosquito control.
Any other comments or questions or thoughts here?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Sasan, thank you. I don't, we're not taking action on anything tonight, so.
Just comments.
Just comments. Thank you.
Whatever the problem is, it's all your fault.
The next item up for public discussion is the review of the draft of the Indian River County Comprehensive Plan Economic Development Element and Evaluation and Appraisal Report.
Good evening, commissioners. As Sasan has said, this is the second portion of the EAR that you're reviewing tonight. Unlike the other elements, the economic development is not a required element. But the county recognizes the importance of pursuing economic development, develop this element. This element is also different from the others, in that unlike most elements, this element is under review, and portions are updated periodically by the county's Economic Development Council, that council meets on a monthly basis. The goal of the economic development is to achieve balanced and orderly economic growth, and to create high-paying jobs for residents of the county. You've seen a version of this slide in Sasan's presentation. With the EAR, the county is, the county is trying to determine if the current plan is achieving the goal, if the plan's objectives reflect the end, which we want to achieve, if the policies under each objective are sufficient to achieve that objective, and how the plan needs to be changed to make it better. The economic development EAR has been reviewed by the Economic Development Council, started this process back in 2006. It's also been reviewed by Chamber of Commerce staff and a committee of the Economic Development And looking at the economic development conditions, just highlighting a few, the county's median household income and per capita, per capita income has been increasing, but more importantly, it's exceeding the states, and it has been exceeding the states. So we've got a higher income here. Number of hotels have decreased. Unemployment has decreased, and a lot of this is due to the predominance of the, well, the recent housing boom, and construction and retail sales have kind of gone up. So we're expecting to see that potentially going up as well further. Healthcare industry as well. We've seen a lot of citrus being removed from the county, citrus acres decreased. Target industry jobs, which are the kind of industries that we want to attract, they have increased.
That's jobs or?
Go back one if you would, please.
Previous. Target industry jobs, right, they increased from 9,624 to 11,188. Again, these are just certain job categories that the county's trying to attract, and they're usually higher paying, so bigger benefit to the residents and kind of a trickle down.
500 people. Oh, no, 1,500. 1,500. 1,500. That's not very successful.
And overall, the percentage of developed commercial industrial land has increased, and a supply of small lot industrial warehouse properties has increased. So there's available land out there for small-scale industries. Looking at the, briefly looking at the objectives and policies, the county's achieved four of the objectives. One's not due until 2010. One was not achieved, and one is not measurable. And if we go to the next slide, just similar to Sasan's, we have a review of all the objectives. Looking at the number two, increase the number of target industry jobs, again, that one's not due to 2010. However, it's anticipated we will achieve that objective at the rate that we're proceeding. Objective five, economic development coordination mechanism between government agencies. It's re-recommended that that is deleted, because the coordination is addressed and other elements of the comp plan, and the fact that we have the Economic Development Council, that council is made up of people from all the jurisdictions in the county. Elected officials are on there as well. Number seven, enhanced pro-economic development reputation, that's proposed to be deleted, because it's, well, it's not measurable at this point, but achieving the other objectives will accomplish that by promoting economic development in the county. And looking at some recommended new policies and policy changes briefly, we recommend refining the target industry list to be a little bit smaller and more focused on specific industries that are most beneficial to the county. Looking at facilitating the development of large lot business and technology parks, because we've had a lot of smaller lots available, as pointed out. And increasing the county's overall average annual wage to be more consistent with the state, because right now, our annual wage, when you consider all the service sector jobs, it's lower than the state's on average. With that brief summary, I'm here for questions and comments.
Any questions? Hopes, aspirations, thoughts?
I was just stunned that your percentage of 43% of the county's population, that means that 57% do not work. 57% of the public doesn't work in Indian River County.
What percentage of that 43% doesn't work?
That's a stunning number. I mean, that's.
But that's the service, that's the service side of our area.
I know, I'm just pointing out.
So how many hours does a service worker have to put in to make a wage that takes care of his basic needs?
That's a, that's a good question. We didn't, actually, we have that in the housing element, we've identified how many hours a service worker needs, or two workers in a household need to meet the average rent, and Sasan probably knows that.
Basically, for a minimum wage earner, has to work like 80 hours per week to make, to afford the housing. And also, if they are, again, two of them working, again, then each one of them at least work 40 hours per week. And that is only for housing, again, that's not include everything else.
But Sasan, that's a median housing.
That's median housing, exactly.
So we're producing more service jobs, according to your data, right? And so we're really going downhill then, as far as people making a livable wage in our county?
You know, you bring up a great point, and this is where it gets interesting to, when you're setting objectives. What is the objective you really want to achieve? Do you just want to have more jobs, or do you want to have more quality jobs? You know, do you want to reduce the unemployment rate, but do you want to reduce the unemployment rate by having the people get minimum wage jobs? You've got, it's really important to step back and look at, really, what do you want to achieve, and why do you want to achieve it? And in economic development, I think different people have different concepts. Some want economic development so their kids can find a place to work here. Others want economic development so that we can employ the unemployed. Others want economic development to increase our wealth and get a more balanced economy. And we hit several of those with the objectives we have. But you make a good point, Dr. Baker. Sometimes, just meeting one objective, like lowering the unemployment rate, you may be doing it with jobs that really don't increase.
Aren't economical for them. There's a big difference in the service industry between a lawyer and a guy that knows a law. I mean, you know, they're both the service industry.
If I understood this, though, the chart in here, your target, where you measured your 9,000 to 11,000 is by target industry, which is not all the industry in the county by any means, correct? And the largest, which I was curious about, the largest targeted area is healthcare and social assistance. Now, that's hospital, medical workers, and that's, the increase was, it was about, within your target, 11,000 people, it's 7,345 total employee, people employed in that one category. The next largest is finance and insurance. And after that, it was scattered among the rest. But, I mean, I guess the point is, is when, is this, who came up with the list of targeted industries?
Basically, Economic Development Council, they came up with the list, and the board of the county commissioner, they approved that list. But like Bill was mentioning, Economic Development Council, they're very active at looking at these things. Constantly, they're trying to change it and refine it. Actually, last time that we changed the target industry was about a year ago, wasn't it?
A couple of years.
Yeah, and then again, they are looking at it right now to see.
That's, I mean, just the reason I was looking at it is because if, based upon what we're talking about, I'm not sure, how do you, I mean, if your objectives would be to move all of these up, let's say, in percentage terms, 20% higher than what we show here today, that would be an objective for the future. And it's a more measurable objective than just charting it as it goes, I mean, giving you a target, like a sales goal. I don't understand, but I, that one, a couple of these numbers jump way out at it, and.
For example, we really think the incentive that they're going to give to the Piper, to keep Piper and bringing more job, those are the type of job that we are looking for.
But Piper's not on the list.
Piper ain't on the list, and you're not going to bring those, you're just going to save jobs.
And those aren't service jobs. You're not.
Service job, they are not our target.
They're not working 80, they're not working 80 hours at Piper.
Exactly. That's why, you know, the service job are not our target. Our target are industrial job and high-paying jobs. Those are our target, in a target list of the.
What you don't see, what you don't see on Piper, is that 40%, the employees of Piper work over at the hospital, work in healthcare in some form or another.
They do?
How is Piper helping the hospital?
Well, it's not Piper per se that's helping, but the fact that the employee is here, so the hospital could draw for either voluntary or paid service. I mean, there's a lot of Piper employees whose wives are nurses. There's a lot who work in the volunteer system at the hospital. And it's, you know, it's an impact that you just don't normally think of or see.
But if you're working 80 hours, then you have two people working 40 hours, presumably, then you know that parents, or two parents, are spending a lot of time working, not educating their kids, not looking after them, and there's, I think that we need to put priorities on those areas too, in our economy. I was also curious about the tourism in the, is tourism going down? We're having less hotels, you showed considerably reduction.
So you got three or four hotels have opened up in the last, opening up.
And so we're getting less tourists then, I mean, we're taxing them more, but we're getting less, right? And so the tourists probably aren't producing many jobs either. I mean, and they're getting less more efficient, the motels are, we're probably not even hiring, we're hiring less people in our tourist industry than we did before, too.
And we may have to adjourn.
And so we're, our economy is not a really a tourist base, we're not heading in that direction.
Put it under the canopy?
For tourists, and we're not heading in an agriculture direction either. What we're heading in is more and more people coming here and using more and more of our services, right? In general, I mean, the development is occurring, more and more of these people that are not working are coming here at a higher percent.
Well, I think, I think the overall objective, like Bill said, one of the goals is to have a balanced economy, and one of the reasons we have an economic development element is to see if we can create a better economy with more higher-paying jobs. I'm not sure tourism is really what you want to really attract.
I agree, I agree.
But that's one of the reasons we have the element and have the objectives and policies to try to get more of the Pipers, or more of the biotechs.
But if there's less motels and hotels, there's no place for these people to stay either. I mean, unless they're staying with friends and relatives and family, I don't know if you're.
Right, and if you read in here, one of the reasons that, there are several reasons why we have fewer hotel rooms. The hurricanes knocked out a few. We've had a bunch of mom-and-pop hotels just go away. And some, the hurricanes knocked out several bigger ones on the beach. But, but as Mr. Lawrence noted, several are coming online now, too. Actually, we have about three or four we're reviewing site plans for right now.
And three have come on, come online, you know, within the last three or four months.
Another one coming on next month.
Well, yeah.
But everybody wants to have clean, high-paying jobs in your county.
So what are we going to do?
So what are we going to, how do we?
How do you get there?
How do we get there, is right.
That's an excellent point, and some, some of the results, if you read in here and you read the analysis, we make the point that all the local governments are out there competing, all trying to get a bigger share of a smaller pie. This country lost 3.2 million manufacturing jobs in about the last seven years. And to the extent that economic development efforts focus on manufacturing, it's hard to get, it's hard to deal with a smaller pie.
When did we have the referendum?
On the sales tax.
On the sales tax, and paying for, or trying to entice development into the area, where we would pay, cut taxes, do that, that was before the hurricanes.
Actually, we had two of those. And I forget, but the thing is, even with incentives, incentives can't make up for, say, some structural deficiencies you have, because it just makes, everyone keeps paying more. And some of the challenges we have, we're not part of a metropolitan area, we're not part of the Orlando metropolitan area or West Palm Beach. We don't have a. We don't have a critical mass of employees. But one of the reasons, I think Reed Knight left, and one of the reasons he told Stan and me early on was, you know, it was hard for him to keep the employees. You know, when you go up to the Cape or in, you know, mid-Brevard County, you have a critical mass and companies can steal from each other.
Well, if you, you ask Reed and D.V. Knight why they left, they won't give you that answer.
No, but that was one, and it wasn't just one thing.
Yeah.
But one of the reasons is, I know they had a challenge getting employees.
That's part of it.
Well, the point, the big point that I'm going to make is, whatever we're doing, whatever methodology we're using, it isn't working, because a thousand, a thousand jobs in five years is, that's, there's something wrong.
I'm not sure, the point I made with this list is that a thousand jobs on the targeted list, that's not a thousand jobs in the county in five years, so don't...
Understand that.
Okay.
Understand that.
And that's what I was looking at when I said, well, if there's only a thousand and here's this targeted list, how do we improve the numbers on the list? It's like, do we chase the numbers or do we chase, is it like F-CAT score, you know?
But the point is, a lot of those numbers are transient numbers, builders and everything, that's why a lot of that dropped off.
Right.
I mean, whatever we're doing, it sure isn't working with these numbers, all these numbers put together. I think we need to...
But George, you got it right in citrus. I mean, your citrus is dropping off and the picker, so there's fewer pickers.
Right.
It's all the above, everything is going downhill.
The whole thing is.
It's, and it's obvious, it's painful to the obvious. Whatever we're doing, especially our relationship with the chamber, we need to change something. We need some radical changes somehow. Bring some of those functions inside the county administration from the chamber and have a little more control over them or something, because this is, there is no industry. Except health workers, characters.
We're not going to talk about rain barrels tonight, are we?
No rain barrels tonight.
Where can I buy one?
Okay, well, I mean, not, you know, not to take away from anything, but I mean, we, we're kind of whipping the same horse ourselves, and I know we all want economic development, but I think that, I think the point is, if you've got some ideas or objectives that we can throw in here, we need to do it. If not, this is one we ought to set aside and kind of hang on to and maybe talk about more often. It's not required for our approval of comp plan.
Yeah.
But it's something that needs, everybody in this county needs to kind of focus on to, for the future.
And all these elements that we're presenting to you now, you'll see again.
Yep.
And again.
And again.
So, so you're going to get a couple more bites at the apple, but if, just, when you get a chance, critically think about some of these things, and what should the county's policy be in going forward, trying to...
Is there a method where we could be released from the sunshine law, so maybe if we could talk about this when we see each other on the street?
No.
Just checking.
Makes too much sense.
Just checking. Okay.
I want to make a political hot potato comment, George.
Oh, boy.
Put it in here.
Just take a note.
We all know the value of the electrical system to the city of Royal Beach, but I see that by 1998, there was going to be a request that Royal Beach consider off-peak rates for industrial reasons. And I hope that there's some kind of a consideration to re-approach them as they entertain this new agreement, because the efficiency now of chilled water and ice storage units for schools, the hospital even, even though it's 24 hours, such enormous savings in tough economic times, and I hope that there's some kind of re-address of that other than just revising the date.
They've already signed that contract, that's a done deal.
That's a done deal. I know.
I have a copy of that contract if you want to...
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, then I suggest, do you have any call Bill or call Bob or Stan?
We all did our dance.
Don't call me.
They heard us.
Okay. Next, next item is Commissioners Matters. We're almost done, ladies, if you all, just so you all know that we're close to the end.
Did it stop raining?
Yeah, then it stopped raining. My motorcycle's soaking wet.
Good.
I hope.
Good.
I'm going to park it in the grove tomorrow, if it is, I'm going to park it in the grove tomorrow night. Commissioners Matters, anybody? Planning Matters.
Just a couple of updates. Since your last meeting, the Board of County Commissioners made a couple of decisions on items you all have seen previously. One was the Imagine Schools, special exception on their Fourth Street site. The board voted to approve it. They did give a lot of attention, like you all did, to that, Phase Two Eastbound Left-Turn Lane. And they kind of did you all one better in terms of, rather than just monitoring the condition, they made it a condition, no monitoring, that at Phase Two, they'll have to do an eastbound left turn lane. And it'll probably require some right-of-way acquisition and so forth, but because it's tied to Phase Two, it'll give them time to do that if they, if they need to. The other item that they voted on, that the board voted on, was to transmit the Quail Ridge, the Thoroughfare Plan Amendment, the two-segment 61st Street and 65th Street out west of 74th Avenue. A little change that they had made at the request of Dan Corrigan, talked to staff and was at the board meeting, to keep the segment of 61st Street west of 90th Avenue on, on the map. No one had an objection to that, so that's, that's probably the way that'll, that amendment will evolve. And the other two things, just coming up, I think as you all know, May 22nd, the next mining workshop on traffic and nuisance issues, and you all will be seeing an ordinance to extend the mining moratorium for six months. You all will be seeing that for the next several weeks. Solid ahead.
On the May 22nd meeting, what time?
9:00 AM.
That's at 9 o'clock.
We couldn't get the chambers up in the morning, is that correct, or get everybody together? So we go, we go in the morning and then we come back that night, for us, our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, next, anything on Attorney Matters, George?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.